This is the City of Wapaka, third Tuesday of the month, City Council meeting.
Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 18th, 2022, and it's 6:00 PM. I'll call this meeting to order by beginning with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Aye.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the vision of the routine justice for all.
All right, we'll have Sandy read the Clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all meetings of the Common Council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes. So the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also take the City Council.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Henry Velicker.
Here.
Scott Porczatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
All right, and Sandy, why introduce, start introducing staff here?
I'm Sandy Stibbs, the City Clerk.
Aaron Jensen, City Administrator.
Eric Bailey, Library Director.
Jared Requieu, Community and Economic Development.
Stephanie Rife, Assistant Finance Director.
Justin Behrens, Director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec Director.
Paul Benjwell, Police Department.
All right, thanks, and Josh Warner is also with us, just in the back. We have a consent agenda in front of you. These are items that we take with one motion and vote on that one motion unless you see something on that consent agenda that you'd like to see moved to the regular agenda. This is your opportunity if you'd like to see something moved to the regular agenda. If not, we're looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Chestnut, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Again, say no, motion carried. Regular agenda, we have, there are no changes to the regular agenda, there's, so I think we can go ahead and just approve the regular agenda as printed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Peterson, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Again, say no, motion carried. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we have a announcement, a resignation letter from older person Mary Fair, who is going to be with us for actually this meeting plus two more meetings, and then she is calling it quits. So, Mary, I guess as we have done in the past, we would make a motion to approve her letter or that we received her letter, I guess, would be the right way to look at it.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Peterson, that we recognize that we received Mary Fair's letter of resignation. Any discussion? We'll let you get a big speech in in your last meeting there, so be prepared.
Okay.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Again, say no, motion carried. All right, we're to public input, this is for non-agenda items. If anybody, any council, or anybody in the audience would like to speak to the council on an item that's not on our agenda, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Any non-agenda items or public input?
Mayor, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
In case anybody's wondering, these are the Badger Books. We will be using them for the November 8th general election. They're set up because we're having training tomorrow and Thursday for our poll workers. In case you're wondering.
Yeah, thanks, Sandy. Anything else for public input? All right, we have community department ed reports. Ian Teal from Wauga Arts is here to report under the Wapaka Arts and Cultural Network.
Hello. Let me see if I can read this. Hi, my name's Ian Teal, I'm the Executive Director of the Wauga Arts Organization, also known as Wauga Arts. Wauga Arts owns and operates the Gerald Opera House in Wauga, which it purchased in 2007. Thank you all for allowing us to take this time to be here today in front of your council. Wauga Arts is a member of the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network that is a result of the Wapaka Cultural Plan that was initiated in 2018. I am here today representing the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network and to inform the council and thank the council for the continued support of the arts in our communities. Wauga is a small town of approximately 2,000 persons, although our community has shown great support for Wauga Arts and our events, and we could not survive without the support of our surrounding communities, including, and most importantly, Wapaka. We've received multiple grants from the Wapaka Area Community Foundation, we regularly host the Wapaka Rotary Club's International Dinner, and we have also received a grant from their organization. Many students from the Wapaka School District have participated in our programs and workshops, and we have collaborated on projects with the Wapaka Community Arts Board. The Wapaka Community Theater has presented several projects at the Gerald Opera House in the past few years, including Frankenstein and Nuncrackers, the nonsense Christmas musical. But most important are the patrons attending our events from Wapaka. Although our audience comes from many communities in the area, our statistics have shown that Wapaka provides the largest percentage of our audience. Wauga Arts presents concerts, plays, and musicals. We regularly host workshops for youth in different creative fields, including filmmaking, theater, theater games, and improvisation, and songwriting. Our largest annual event is the Wauga International Film Festival. Our 12th annual festival will take place this November 9th through 12th. As Wauga has no hotels, we generally house all our filmmakers, visiting filmmakers in Wapaka. We book rooms at the Comfort Suites as well as we generally fully book the Green Felton Inn for the weekend. Along with filmmakers, we also have other festival attendees that come and stay in Wapaka and visit their restaurants and bars and what have you. One of the films we will be presenting this year is The Great Wauga Train Duralment. This is a documentary that was produced by Wauga Arts and tells the story of the train derailment through interviews with those that were there 25 years ago. And Wapaka also played a big part in that train derailment, basically putting up a lot of the people that were evacuated. Jack Rhodes, who unfortunately passed away last week, has presented a classic film each year for the festival in conjunction with the classic film series presented here at the Wapaka Library. This year, we will presenting, be presenting the classic Western Trooper Hook on Thursday, November 9th at 1:30 PM. We were fortunate enough to be able to record Jack's introduction to the film before his passing, and it will be presented on video before the film. As many of you know, Jack made many great contributions to the Wapaka community, and he will be greatly missed. In addition to the loss of Jack, an important mentor, we also recently lost John Gussmer, who had been a board member for Wauga Arts and a great supporter for many years. At the film festival, we'll be showing 54 other films, other than those mentioned, and a lot of films from Wisconsin, and these are films that have been selected from over 300 submissions. We are asking the residents of Wapaka to continue to donate us, donate to us and be part of our audience and to participate in our projects. Wauga Arts encourages youth to participate in our core mission, making new works in theater and film. We believe it is good for the community to have members that want to be part of writing, acting, and producing America's entertainment. We are grateful for the support Wapaka provides in so many ways. We gratefully appreciate the time and consideration that this council has taken to provide platforms and support for all artistic endeavors in our communities. Thank you all for your time, and if you'd like to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Ian. Anybody have any questions? If somebody wanted to give a donation, what's the best way to do that?
Go to waugarts.com.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you again very much.
Yep, thanks for coming tonight. Department Ed reports, we have a full meeting tonight, so we've decided that you're going to have to read those department ed reports instead of actually having them viewed. So, we're going to just move on to unfinished business. This has to do with the Halloween event that we're going to have on Main Street, and it's talking about some street closures. So, I know this is a memo from Leslie from Parks and Rec, but Laura, I'm guessing you're going to present this.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. So, after our last council meeting, when you all approved the prior street closings, somebody, a very intelligent person, said, "What about closing to Elm Street, seeing as how we are doing the haunted trail on the Challenge the Outdoors?" And that was not included in the prior street closing. So, if you look on page 78, you will see in orange all of our street closer closings that we are requesting, which goes all the way to Elm Street on the northeast side of the map there. That way, when people come back from the Challenge the Outdoor course, which runs right along the west side of the river, they will not have to worry about any traffic as they cross the road to get to Main Street. And indicated in green is the routed, the detour routes that our community can take and emergency vehicles can take to get around the orange blocked off roads. So, our request is to add the street closing, closure going all the way to Elm Street, so not just the Main Street with those side streets, but also all the way to Elm Street.
All right, do we have any questions? Anybody want to make a motion that we add the closure of Granite Street from Washington Street to Main, and Water Street from Main to Elm Street as a closure on that date?
So move.
I'll second.
Motion by Fair, second by Dykstra, that we approve of that road closure change on October 28th, 2022. Any discussion? Just a voice vote here. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Again, say no, motion carried. All right, thanks, Laura. All right, the next one is, the next couple here are some license reports, and this has to do with the Remata Inn. The Remata Inn, as I understand, has been sold, and so all they're doing is just transferring their licenses to, to the new, to the new owner. It looks like the agent is staying the same, but we do have some, a couple of motions that will deal with that. The first one is license report number 1592, which is their liquor license. We would need a motion to approve transferring that license.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Martin, that we approve the transfer of liquor license to Royal One Hospitality LLC. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Again, say no, motion carried. Next up is license report number 1593, same thing, it's being transferred. This is the Arcade Amusement Device License. Again, that's just being transferred to Royal One Hospitality LLC from the previous owner. We would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Chestnut, that we approve license report number 1593. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Again, say no.
No.
None.
Dimitri, we got two noes, eight ayes, two noes, motion carries. Next up, license report number 1594, this is the dance hall license, again, for the same property, it's just because it's being sold and transferred to the new owner. So this is a dance hall license, we need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Fair.
Second.
Second by Porczatsky, that we approve license report number 1594. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Again, say no, motion carried. All right, let's go to the airport, we have rental hangar of space number six. Aaron, it looks like you're taking this one.
Ken, Paul, with you being the Chair of the Airport Board, if you want to take it, you can, if not, I'm totally fine with it, so you let me know.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Okay, thanks, Paul. So on page 82 of your packet, you'll see rental of hangar space agreement. Lima Whiskey Aviation is just an LLC, I think it's a jointly owned plane for hangar six, and this is just a typical process, it has come through Airport Board, it's been recommended by Airport Board, and now to City Council. They do meet all of the requirements of renting a space in the hangars owned by the city at the airport. Looking for a motion to approve this lease agreement.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Olson, that we approve rental of hangar space number six agreement between the City of Wapaka and Lima Whiskey Aviation LLC. Any discussion? Sandy, we'll call the roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Mary Fair.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Aaron. Next up, we have Resolution Number 1528. This is urging legislator and governor to fix our funding of our local services, and Aaron, do you want to go with this?
Yeah, so this is something we've touched on briefly over the last several meetings, and it's just, when we talk about the challenges of putting together a budget, we do talk about some of the things that make that difficult, especially in the high inflation years that we're, we've seen the last couple of years. One is the net new construction, and the other one, and maybe more importantly, and what this gets to more than the net new construction, is the shared revenues, which have decreased over time, and you can see there is a comparison in this resolution, and it does show our 2003 shared revenues from the state, which was $1,286,874. In 2022, and we did have a slight increase this year, very slight, and I'll get into that when we are in the committee of the whole meeting, but you can see it's, you know, over $250,000, less than 2003, and costs have not gone down. So, this is a conversation that's happening amongst the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, towns, Wisconsin Towns Association, County Association, will be attending a conference in La Crosse later this week, and this will be a hot topic, and in talking about how we can improve what is a system that causes challenges for municipalities to provide services. So that's what this resolution is. I should note that this resolution did come from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities as an advocacy piece, and we are here to talk about it tonight.
Any discussion? Anybody like to make a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Second.
Motion by Fair, second by Chestnut, that we approve Resolution Number 1528. It's a resolution urging legislator and governor to fix broken system of funding of critical local services. Any discussion? Sandy, we'll call the roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Colin Dykstra.
No.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Aaron. Next up, we have Resolution Number 1527. This is a resolution supporting Snowfighters Appreciation Day. Justin?
Thanks, Mayor. The resolution can be seen on page 86 of the packet, and this is a resolution I like to do every single year, just tipping our hat to the individuals who will be in the plow trucks at a moment's notice now, fighting the weather. In Wisconsin, we get over 40 inches of snow every year. Between the snow events and the icing events, that means our crews are out there at a moment's notice, a lot of times it snows in the middle of the night because temperatures drop and then humidity drops down. So it's a nod to those individuals who are basically on call and at the will of the weather. There is also a economic benefit to the city. As we get these roads cleared up or cleared off, it allows our commerce to continue operating like normal. And again, we usually hit the streets around midnight, 2:00 AM, so that we can have a majority of the streets, if not all of them, cleared by 6:00 to 10:00 AM in the morning, and again, just allowing the city to function like normal. And, and also, there is a major safety factor there. The sooner we get to these things, get the ice off the road, the safer these road conditions are. We have no idea how many crashes are prevented from this service, all we know is that it's at least one, and that's good enough for us. So, this resolution, again, is just showing our appreciation to our public work staff who spend time every year clearing off the snow. Last week, we did have our annual meeting, where we go over a lot of things, such as our safety procedures, our equipment. Interim Captain Benchwell was there, which was a nice change of pace, and we kind of go through all this stuff of let your families know what, you know, it is snow season, get yourself mentally and physically ready, because it is, it is, it is a burden on these people to do this. But anyways, a resolution and lunch, pizza lunch is our appreciation to those individuals, so.
Thanks, Justin. Council, we would like to have you just make a motion to place this on file, and obviously thank, pre-thank our snow fighters for their hard work.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Porczatsky, that we approve Resolution Number 1527, the resolution supporting Snowfighters Appreciation. Any discussion? Sandy, we'll call the roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Mary Fair.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, next up, we have the 8,000 Building Digestor Cover Rehabilitation Project Change Order.
Right.
Justin, we can't get, go ahead.
Want me to shorten down the wording next time?
Please.
I'll try. So this, this change order with the memo starts on 87, goes all the way through 103 with supporting documents and some pictures. So this is our major wastewater treatment plan improvement of the year. We budgeted roughly $400,000 for it. I do have to apologize, in the first line, I have a typo of the date, so I have January 20,022, that should be 2022. So this tank, it's our smaller digester, in 1970, it was a floating wood cover that was into, made into a steel cover, and then in 1996, with major renovation at the plant, it was made into a fixed cover, which means it didn't move, and it was basically just a tank. 25 years in the future, we knew we had to do something with this. We had limited ability to inspect the internal condition of the tank, however, we knew that we needed to make this improvement, and the staff really wanted to make it back into a floating cover, and the reason is because they felt like we could do a better job of treating our sludge and our gas production, and then also, there was a safety factor there. With the cover as a floating cover, it can lift up and go down. As a fixed cover, it doesn't move, and we actually had an incident where we had a valve that failed. It filled up the tank too much and actually heaved some of the walls around this tank. So we came forward with this project, and it is pretty much done now, but throughout the course of the project, we had some additions, which I will go through as best as I can. We don't talk a lot about treatment plant projects because they're pretty technical and sciency, and I don't want to put you guys asleep, so. I have a list there, and we'll scroll onto the pictures here in a second. The first one, 1.1, was removing existing steel ring from interior of digester. So we had additional steel inside the tank that was not noted on the plans, it was missed during the design, so that additional effort to remove this extra steel meant an increase of roughly $900. 1.2 caulking of seams and filling of holes in a digester cover, so after we removed the cover, we inspected it, and we wanted to basically do some additional work to ensure the soundness of this cover into the future. There was a lot of things that we did have in there that the contractor had to provide as far as testing, and then additional work as far as welding, but this was something we wanted to add in, just to make sure that we would get the lifespan out of it that we wanted. 1.3 was the rehabilitation of the digester tank concrete, this was internal, and I have some very good pictures on that. Basically, with the cover being fixed and having it usually filled with high-strength waste, it made it very difficult to truly inspect the inside. So once we got the cover off, we could really see the condition, and we had to do some additional work. And 1.4, a pressure test of decant pipes and wall. Again, this was supposed to be something that we thought we could just do an inspection visually, once we got into it, we, there was, basically made it impossible, there was the way the pipes are situated, made it impossible to do that type of inspection, so we had to do a pressure test to ensure it was not leaking. Aaron, if you could scroll down to the pictures, please. Page 99.
Thank you.
Yep. So this is a couple pictures of the cover after it was taken off. You can see, like, this is the reason why we called for some additional caulking, was to ensure that we made, we had taken care of all these potential leak spots into the future. So once it's put back into service, again, it's going to float, it's going to be floating on liquid and a little bit of gas, so that, those are both pre-pictures. If you go down to page 100, so that picture there shows the existing wall, and you can see all the aggregates are showing. The gray on top, that is actually a grout that was added just before the picture, just to level it off, but that shows you how much concrete was corroded and eaten away. But that shows you how much concrete was corroded and eaten away from that part of the structure. It's two to three inches. If you scroll down to the next picture right there, you can actually see rebars exposed. So inside the wall, there's rebar enforced within the concrete, so we had a very bad section there. We moved down again, so the, the solution was to add a layer of grout. So this picture in the middle, you can see, kind of like the pinkish, that's that exposed aggregate that we saw throughout the entire tank. Next to it is the, the additional grout, so the nice smooth gray, that's where the additional cost comes in. And then, the nice pretty brown was an epoxy finish, that was in the plan, that's not an extra, but that's just showing you the final outcome, so. So basically, the, the extra in here paid for additional life and structural soundness. And at the end, we got a, the product that we were expecting. The last two pictures are, are again, of a finished product, so there is the, the cover, that's the old cover, just rehabilitated. So again, it had all those additional work done to it with caulking, welding, and then, again, epoxy coating around it to try and preserve and maintain what we have. And then the crane is setting that thing in place. Go down again, please. So this is the decant pipe. If, it's hard to see in this picture, but as you, into the pipes there, there's kind of a gray section. Just beyond that, there was like a bevel or a bell section, and it's basically a mechanical joint. When they put these, put this together way back in early nineteen hundreds, or when it was rehabilitated, excuse me, that's just how they did it. If you scroll down, it's hard to see, but you can kind of see it's a bell section within the concrete wall. So we were expecting more or less a smooth, straight pipe, we could inspect it. We couldn't expect, inspect that. A couple guys tried to reach their hands in there and see if they could feel around. So we had to pressure test, and it wasn't just one spot, it was several tests, to make sure we didn't have leaking of, of gas or water into our walls. So that was that extra. Of only $500 for that, which we felt was money well spent. And this is a little after the fact, because we had to make these snap decisions to keep the project on task, and we are just getting done with it now, as we need to basically get moving with our other project, which is, we need to do some maintenance on our main digester. That was the reason why we had to redo this project. So, the change order in total is $25,791. The original contract, the construction contract went to August winters in a sun, and that was a previous approval not to exceed $332,500. So this addition raises this, this contract, this project, up to $358,294. So this addition, within our sewer department, we had borrowed two years for all of our projects, for this year and for next. This was the main project down at the plant, which was roughly $400,000. We had our vac truck, which came in slightly under, but which, what means is, next year, we have several projects that we will be adjusting to make sure that we stay, we can't exceed our, our borrow limit. So we've, we've looked into that, and we have a couple things that we're going to be adjusting for next year. While we didn't want to do this, or we didn't want financially to do this, I mean, we had to do this, we, we made a commitment to renovate or rehabilitate this tank, and it's going to serve us for at least another thirty years plus. So this is, this is something that I need approval to basically increase the amount that is owed to August winter for the amount that was shown with funding to come out of the sewer revenue bonds.
So, everybody understands? Justin, did we have a contingency with this?
We did not have it on this one.
All right. Okay, and understand that this is coming out of the sewer revenue bonds, so basically it's the sewer enterprise fund, not from the general fund. We'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Velicker, that we approve of the 8,000 Building Digestor Cover Rehabilitation Project Change Order in the amount of $25,791. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardsky.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
And Mary Fair.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Justin. Next up, ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-two, this has to do with actually being able to hunt in the city of Opaque, and soon-to-be Captain Benchwell is giving his debut here today, so you guys be nice to him. So you haven't, you can, this is the first reading, so obviously, we're not going to act on that tonight.
Sure.
We'll act on it at our next meeting. You can actually either read the, read the ordinance, or you can just summarize it, whichever you feel better doing.
Thank you. So every year, we have people ask if they can gunhunt in the city. So we're looking at amending the ordinance to allow for that under certain circumstances. So if you, yeah, you are on page one hundred and four in the packet, which will highlight some of the amendments. So basically, I'm just going to read one small section, which kind of covers all of the main points. So any person hunting with a firearm on a privately owned parcel, twenty acres or greater, within the city limits, with an approved application from the chief of police and a payment of $10 valid for two years from the date of issuance, the chief of police shall determine if safety to the community can be protected and may impose reasonable limitations. All Wisconsin DNR regulations should be followed. Property owners shall be responsible for notifying adjacent property owners that they have been authorized to hunt with a firearm on the approved property during the established Wisconsin DNR hunting seasons. Any person hunting with a bow or crossbow on a privately owned or city-owned parcel during the yearly citywide deer hunt with a special license is issued and managed by city personnel, and reasonable restrictions may be prescribed by the responsible city personnel. All Wisconsin DNR regulations shall be followed. So with this, the chief of police, anyone that did apply, the chief of police would, you know, approve or deny their application based on location, safety, et cetera. He also would meet with those individuals to discuss hunter safety concerns or anything like that. And this doesn't just cover deer hunting, it would be any Wisconsin state regulated hunting, so duck, bird, anything like that. Then also noting that, if there is a violation, it would be handled by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, and not only the violator could be cited, the owner of the property as well. So those are some of the bullet points from the amendments.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody have any questions? Again, we're not going to vote on this tonight, but this is a good time for questions. Dimitri, go ahead.
I'm just curious how many parcels are in the city that are twenty acres or larger?
Sure. So I believe Erin has a map.
Do. And remember that, when you read that, that it does say private property, because we do obviously have parks that are of greater than twenty acres.
Okay. So if you turn your attention to the big screens, all the properties highlighted in yellow are properties that are over twenty acres in size, twenty acres or greater in size, and could be eligible to be approved. You know, an example of, of a property that may not be, but it is twenty acres, is you look at the west side of town, you'll see the Foxfire Golf Course. So that obviously has some different characteristics than other parcels. Paul, we were looking at another one, somewhere that I thought was similar.
The new development.
Yeah, that, you can see River North is in there, that's city-owned property. So not saying that all of these would be approved, but just to give you an idea, these are the parcels that are greater than twenty acres. I think it's also important to note, Paul, you did a great job explaining and summarizing that. Brian Ozell has been in touch with the chief of police from New London, and this is, replicates what New London does. They've had it in place for quite a while, and they haven't had any issues. I don't know the exact date they, they put it in place, but this looked to mimic that.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Um.
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
So what, what would the criteria be that the chief would use to determine if it's a safe place to hunt?
You know, like Erin said, obviously.
Is that already determined, like proximity to?
Yeah, it's going to be, you know, if you look at like a farm field out by Flea Farm, that's going to be a different situation than a golf course with Park Vista or, you know, residences and stuff like that. So obviously, consideration will be taken to the location of where it would be allowed.
Right.
Other things we talked about, Mary, were proximity to schools, you know, some of those types of things. So I think every parcel has its unique characteristics, and we wanted to give the chief of police the authority to review all those characteristics.
And the, the person is given the license, not, the property isn't licensed as a hunting area. It's the person gets licensed. So if, if I get my twenty-acre thing approved, I can't just have my whole family come and everybody hunt on that property, or could I?
I'll let Erin cover that part of it.
You can. So it's actually when the application gets submitted, the application is for the parcel number to be approved. So, yes, now that person, everyone that's hunting has to have a valid DNR license, and that's, I think Paul mentioned, if there's a violator, that's not the property owner, both the viol, the hunter that violated said rule, plus the property owner could be responsible for that.
DNR rules are pretty strict, too, so.
Right.
Well, in twenty acres of land, you would, I mean, one hunter is twenty acres of land. You wouldn't want more than one hunter at a time. So if I was the hunter, I wouldn't want to be there with somebody else. Anybody else? Dimitri, go ahead.
A follow-up question. What, what is the impetus behind this? Do we have a number of people requesting this?
Yeah, it sounds like, it comes up every year, people kind of ask, and it's just something that continues to keep coming up, so it's being addressed.
We do allow bow hunting, you know, I mean, we're required by state law to allow bow hunting, although we can regulate it a little bit. But yeah, we, this is something that has been requested many times over the years. Colin, go ahead. I'm sorry, Dave.
Can the type of firearm be regulated?
Yeah, we, we, we talked about that.
Right, we did. We talked about it, and it is not. It just follows standard DNR regulations, so.
Do those regulations prohibit somebody using a high-powered rifle within the city limits?
That's a great question, that I don't have the answer to.
We, we did check into that, and it does not.
It does not prohibit a high-powered rifle.
What about assault rifles? Are we going to have someone shooting AK-47 in town?
You can hunt with an AR-15, I mean, it's, you can't, it's not fully auto, obviously, but yeah, there's, whatever the DNR allows, it would be allowed, so.
We can, I guess, Dave, you have? My question deals with the schedule. Does it match the hunting season of current, or our bow season goes January to something? January to March or something? That's going to have the same restrictions as the DNR has for their normal hunting times?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All regular seasons are recognized. So basically, if, if there's nothing specified in the ordinance, it all follows DNR regulations.
There is no gun hunting in the spring. Yeah. So, I mean, if you're talking about our, our hunt, that would not be a part of that.
We would still come forward for approval for our special hunt, our city's special hunt each year, because that's our season.
Good. Anybody else? Any other questions?
Today I'm hunting in the city. What concerns me most is some of those yellow, and I realize that the police department will be very careful about which parcels they allow to hunt. Twenty acres is a pretty big piece of land, but if you're on the edge of that twenty acres, you're a lot closer to civilization than if you're in the middle of the twenty acres. So, and, and the fact that many different types of, I don't think they weapons, firearms they're called, could be being carried by these hunters. So it just seems like there's, there's a lot of places to hunt, and so I, I just don't think it's appropriate to do it in the city limits.
Hold on, the jet is landing. Paul, what would you like to say?
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I think you just had to turn it off.
Go ahead, Paul.
Or didn't, do you want to say something?
I can't hear anything you're saying.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Dimitri, sorry. Go ahead.
I would just like to back what Mary says, I just, I think that a twenty-acre limit is kind of a inappropriate sort of standard, because they could be shooting on the edge of that twenty acres. A twenty acres could take all kinds of shapes. It would, it would be more appropriate, in my mind, if it was based on number of yards from a neighboring property, for instance, and, and then have that parameter based on, you know, how far can a bullet travel, sort of a thing. This just seems like a inappropriate.
Anybody else? Again, this is the first reading, so I would, I would strongly suggest that you talk to the public about this, and find out what your constituents say, you know, and, and again, we'll discuss at our next meeting, which is in November, first meeting in November. And at that time, you know, we would be entertaining a motion at that time. That's why we have two readings. Okay? All right. Paul, thank you.
Thank you.
Colin. I'm sorry, Colin.
Could we, is this information that, that, could that be shared with the city council? The map that you, of the parcels that are listed?
Absolutely. I'll shoot it to you in an email.
Okay, thank you.
I think when you did that, before we go on, when you did the, you just looked for parcels of twenty acres or more, you didn't ask the property owners if they were interested in participating or anything like that. Okay. Enough said there. Again, thanks, Paul. Let's go to zoning change for Times Square Joint Venture LLP for 800 West Fulton Street, and this is parcel number thirty-four dash thirty dash twenty-two dash seven, and it would be an ordinance, so this will be the first reading. Ordinance number twenty dash twenty twenty-two, and Jared, you're on board here.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This one starts on page one oh six of your packet. I guess I'll preface this by saying, so this is the first reading of the zoning rezone request. At the next reading, at the next Um, at the next reading, at the next council meeting, uh, this will also be accompanied by a condo plat request and a CSM request. So I will touch on the rezone here as well as the other two, just because they are all kind of intertwined. But then, of course, I'll reserve if there's time for questions or if there's any questions. Otherwise, at the second reading, I can take questions as well. So this is a request for 800 West Fulton Street, uh, which would be, um, known by everybody locally as Piggly Wiggly in the old Kmart building. So right now, this is a fairly large parcel. It consists of both the building at the bottom of the hill as well as the hill behind it. Part of this parcel is zoned residential. Uh, it's an interior section of the hill part of this parcel. So this rezone request is actually coming forward to eliminate that dual zoning, um, on that parcel. And that's an issue as our zoning code does not accommodate dual zoning. So if they want to do anything on the parcel, it would just be, uh, you know, that we, we couldn't allow anything because we didn't, we wouldn't know which exact zoning district standards to follow, especially with one being a residential and the other being a, uh, commercial district. So we're eliminating a dual zone, uh, dual-zoned parcel, and that's really the first and foremost, um, of this request. Again, along with this request will be coming, if you see page 114, uh, there will be a certified survey map coming forward that's actually gonna split the parcel. Uh, so it's gonna split the hill section of the parcel into a, its own parcel, and then the building section will be its own parcel. Uh, but that will be at a future meeting. Um, so really, to move forward with these other processes, we have to take a look at this dual-zoned property and fix that first. Uh, happy to take any questions now, otherwise, uh, happy to take any through email or at the second reading.
Yeah, thanks, Jared, for that explanation. Again, just to remind everybody, this is the first reading. Uh, so we will have, uh, our second reading at our first meeting in November, where you'll have the opportunity to vote on, on this ordinance number 20-2022. Any comments? All right? Good job. Thanks. Next up, uh, we have license report number 1595. This is a taxi driver's renewal license. You can see that on page 115. We're just making a, or requesting that, uh, you approve that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Olson, that we approve of license report number 1595. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, say no. Motion carried. Uh, next, then we have license report number 1591, which is on page 116. Uh, you have four names on there that are applying for operators licenses. We would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Fair, that we approve license report number 1591. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, uh, communicate, uh, communications recommendations of the mayor. One, don't forget, uh, we have a committee of the whole meeting tonight, uh, so sit tight. We'll probably take a little bit of a, like a five-minute break before we go into the committee of the whole. It is an open session, so we won't be closing the doors, but, uh, we will not be acting on anything. You'll just have a presentation, your first presentation, really, of what the 2023 budget could look like. Uh, and then also, um, I'm just popping up Sandy's email to me real quick. But, uh, so you may ask, uh, since we got Mary's, uh, letter of resignation, what it, what your options are or what our options are. And, uh, Mary's term actually, uh, does end this coming April. So, uh, she, if she would have continued on, she would have had to take out nomination papers in December and then return those the first, uh, first week in, in January, uh, to be on the ballot. Uh, so this is a short term, um, before we get to that point, so we have, uh, we could look at a couple of different options. Uh, one, Mary's staying until after the, the November 5th City Council meeting, which is the last City Council meeting, uh, in November, so we would, our next meeting then would be in December. That would be the meeting where we could discuss, uh, if, if we had anybody that was interested, uh, in taking that position, that, that either, uh, wrote in asking, uh, to be on that, we could, we could take that consideration at that time. That person, if they are considering, or they would like to fill out Mary's position, you would think they'd also want to then fill out nomination papers for the next election, which are two-year terms, of course, you know that. So uh, that's something for them to think about as they go through. Uh, the other alternative really is, is to just leave it open, uh, because it is short-term. The downside to that, of course, is then we only have one person from wards one and eight that, that, which would be Dave Peterson, uh, that's representing, uh, that ward during those, um, four months, uh, of the vacancy. So any thoughts? Did I explain it? Well, the dog likes it. Anybody? Any thoughts?
I think it kind of makes sense to just see if anyone approaches us with an interest, and if no one does, then we could leave it open, and if they do, and you feel, we feel comfortable with that, then take it from there.
Okay. Anybody else? So, I mean, and we wouldn't even really discuss this until after Mary's last meeting, so, like I said, that would be in December. All right, we'll see what happens.
The only thing I have is, council members, if you're planning to attend the Halloween on Main event, um, we would love for you to get involved by stopping into City Hall first and grabbing some little prizes. And if you see a costume that you think deserves a prize, adult or child, you can hand that to them. Um, so for anyone who plans to do that, just shoot me an email or call me, and we'll, we'll get you some, some fun stuff to hand out.
Do we have to dress up? Are you gonna dress up?
Yes, Scott, you have to dress up.
Colin, go ahead.
I think I made an announcement last year for this, but, uh, I, I know that the, the, you guys put something in here, so I want to make sure that everybody, if anybody was not aware, this chili cook-off is coming up again, uh, the day after our next, uh, uh, city council meeting. So November 2nd, uh, it's, I've, I've attended. I think it's great, and it's a great fundraiser. So anybody watching or interested, come check it out at the Danes Hall.
All right. Thanks. Anybody else for the good of the regular meeting tonight? All right, we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Fair, second by Olson, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, sorry.
Against, motion carried. Uh, we're adjourned at 6:59.
Gotcha, Paul Hagan.
All right, uh, we have a committee of the whole meeting. Give us, uh, give, uh, Aaron and Stephanie about five minutes to, to get set up, uh, and stretch your legs and and, uh, we'll get going again. Uh, everybody, welcome to our committee of the whole meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. It, uh, is Tuesday, October 20th, October 18th, 2022, at 7:13 PM. Um, we have an agenda, which is really just the discussion on the budget. Uh, we would need a motion to approve, uh, this agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Martin, that we approve the agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, say no. Motion carried. Let me set this up real quick, and then I'll send it over to Aaron and Stephanie. Um, so what you're seeing tonight, uh, as you go through this, uh, is a budget that was, uh, prepared by staff, obviously, with input from the department heads, as, as you'll hear from Aaron. Uh, so I, I don't, I really don't want to talk about that as much as what, talk about the tool that they're using tonight. I think you're really gonna, um, it's, it's a spreadsheet, and it's an interactive spreadsheet. So if you have questions about certain things, um, adjustments that you'd say, what have, what if we, what if we do this? You know, what if we add 1% to this area or something like this? This tool that you're gonna see tonight, you'll be able to see the bottom line immediately on how that changes the levy, changes the mill rate and all, you know, those things. So it's, it's a really nice tool, uh, that Kathy had. And, uh, Stephanie has learned how to use it, and so we're gonna, we're gonna present it to you tonight. All right, Aaron?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Smith. Um, and I guess before I start, I want to thank the mayor for all of his work and our department heads for all their work, Stephanie and Kathy, um, because it has been a lot of work over a number of months. And, um, as we have waited numbers to come in and fill them in, and then tried to kind of brainstorm on how we were gonna solve for the puzzle, and that's what we're gonna go through tonight. Just a little, as the mayor said, we're gonna be looking at numbers and spreadsheets that might be a little small, so Dave, most of you are pretty close to the screens. Dave and Mary, if you want to slide to the empty seats when we get to that point, um, I'd encourage you to do so. Um, and I'm gonna skip through, I'm gonna start it off by talking about something we talked about a little earlier tonight. And that is funding local services, and I'm gonna skip right to, we've, I've beat this to death, and these partnerships and all of this, and here's our revenue sources. The reality is, is most, a lot of our revenue, the majority of our revenue, comes from our property taxes and from our, uh, state shared revenue. But I wanted to show a snapshot of our history and what this actually has looked like over time. So that first column is the state's net new construction, and then the next column over is the, uh, are, the city of Opaque's net new construction. You can see how it compares. Um, and then the next one, you'll see the Opaque, uh, levy dollar allowance. So basically, that net new construction allowed us to up our levy and have that much in the corresponding year, um, for additional revenues to cover whatever additional costs were for that given year. So you can see it was, it has been as little as 5,000 or just over $5,000. Um, and the, the largest amount was actually this year with a net new construction of 2.44 at about 56,000. My eyes aren't good either, so I apologize if I'm getting it wrong by a little bit. I think the other important thing to note is that even though we've had a levy allowance of those over the past 11 years, sometimes our shared revenue, or maybe often, our shared revenue decreased. So maybe we didn't get that full 30-some thousand or 40-some thousand. In, sometimes we actually had less revenues to cover whatever the extra expenses were. The last, on the far right, you'll see CPI. That just kind of gives you an idea, um, what we were battling against for inflationary measures doing during those years. So this is something I can share, um, with you guys if you think it might be useful, uh, but I can email that out, and that paints a picture. All right, Steph, I'm gonna plug your tool in here. Okay. So now I'm going to kind of be reading off the memo that I sent this afternoon. I encourage you to pull it up on your iPads if you feel like that's easy to, to move along. Otherwise, we'll be going through it verbally. First, before we get into the spreadsheet, I'm gonna just hit on some, well, a couple of things that are important to note. This budget that we're presenting tonight as a proposed budget for 2023 is a budget that, um, balances first and foremost. Um, it allows us to not dip into our fund balance. It does protect your bond rating. It does provide all the services that we're accustomed to seeing. It's not a decrease in services. And we'll go through the details on how we get there. I want to share some notable highlights on property values. One of those highlights is our equalized value, and this is something city council members heard about when we talked about the Public Works facility. Uh, we got a pleasant surprise, uh, about a month or so ago when we realized that our equalized value went up 13% or 61 million. Uh, that does not help us necessarily when it comes to operations and what we're talking tonight. It does help us in our debt capa- service capacity, which we have already discussed. Additionally, uh, our net new construction came in at 2.44, which you've heard me mention a few times, and that is the highest that we've seen. Uh, in those 11 years that I showed on the screen, um, I ventured to s- I would guess, knowing some of the data in the 2004, 2005, building, I know for housing units specifically was pretty high. I don't know the exact net new construction number, but I would feel pretty confident that it might be the highest since that time period. In addition to the net new construction increase, we do have a one-time lift adjustment this year, and that is from our terminated TIDS. And that's a 5.49% adjustment. That adjustment is really, really helping us, um, combat inflation, although we can't combat it to the full extent. Um, we do have more tools than the vast majority of municipalities in this specific year. So, uh, we are thankful for that. I give city council, past, um, past and present, and finance departments, past and present, uh, a lot of, a lot of credit for that, because there was a plan that was stuck to that closed some TIDS early. Uh, and without that plan, we wouldn't have been realizing that benefit. Additionally, we're a little lucky that it happened to happen in a inflationary period, right? And that we have that tool, uh, at the right time. So with that being said, we're gonna go through some revenue line items and here, pull this up. Give me just a second, please, so I can follow along on my screen. So I think, just to make sure. All right. Thank you, Steph. All right, so we are on a, we're gonna go through our revenues first, and we're gonna go through how those have changed. You'll see in that first line, general property taxes, uh, that $160,000 increase. That is an increase based off of the net new construction plus the, the TID adjustment, and that's what we are allowed per levy limit. We're not allowed any more than that. So that is a pretty substantial increase compared to other years. You'll see right below that, we have, uh, a decrease, a substantial decrease of $48,000. That is basically a pilot payment or a payment in lieu of taxes from our water utility to the general fund. I think it's important to note that that's not necessarily a decrease in 48,000 actual dollars. Uh, when we were going through this, we recognized that this is something maybe we failed to adjust the last couple of years, so we wanted to adjust it completely to be as accurate as we could. Uh, we have that around $200,000. The reason for that decrease is that the water utility is governed by the Public Service Commission, and the Public Service Commission has equations and sheets that we work with our auditors to fill in, and, um, the result of those worksheets, that tells us what we are allowed to be paid for a payment in lieu of taxes. And those worksheets have depreciation factors in them. So the depreciation is what we're seeing the result of here. Uh, the sewer utility does not have that same depreciation factor, so that stays flat at the $250,000. As we continue to move down, uh, we get into the shared revenues through the state aid, and the three big programs are those top three. Shared revenue expenditure constraint, computer aid, could call that computer and utility aid. Um, and you'll see that those are up. So shared revenue, 20- And you'll see that those are up. So shared revenue, $20,000 increase. Expenditure restraint, $9,000 increase. And the computer aid, $1,000 increase. So percentage wise, not up a ton, but it is up and it's not decreasing, which certainly is helpful and we will take that. Going to keep going down. I won't hit on every one of these, but I do want to hit on some of the noteworthy ones. I'm going to skip down to general transportation. That's another big state funding source. It's, those two wash out a little bit. You'll see a $7,700 increase and then a $3,300 decrease. So just about $4,000 there from the general transportation aids. Moving down to the next section. Let's see, intergovernmental revenues. Okay, so you'll see a big increase here. And that's in building permit fees. And we've talked about these. We've been pretty fortunate that we've had some momentum. We expect that momentum to continue with the River North developments and such. We've been probably over conservative in budgeting this line item for the last few years. And we took the average of the last four years and we plugged that number in as a revenue, $240,000. I think it's important to note that this is not something that we know is going to stay. We're going to have to look at this every single year. We're going to have to see kind of what's happening and what the momentum is in our community. And that may be adjusted up and it may be adjusted down by $50,000 any given year or more. So I do want to note kind of the, how quickly that one can change. Let's see here, continuing to go down. You'll see a $3,500 decrease in non-city events. That actually just got moved to another line. It's not a true decrease. Actually, I think it got moved, some of that got moved to the machinery and equipment that you'll see in there, right below that. And senior memberships, senior programs, continuing to go. The next one I want to touch on is the interest. We upped that about $15,000 and that's just with the climbing, you know, interest rates have been in the news a lot lately. Obviously, from, if you're going to buy a house, it's not that great right now. But if you have some money that's sitting in investments, we do expect that to go up from where it has been. And we also are sitting on a larger number of dollars due to some of our public works facility, you know, will be holding that money that has been borrowed short term. So we expect, we upped it $15,000. We feel like that's pretty conservative. West Fulton Street, we do own the old QuickTrip building or what C and D Insurance is in right now. We're in the middle right now of having those conversations about upping the lease there at the end of a 10-year term. And we've had those conversations, expect that to go up to more market rate. That will hit in May of this year. Another one I want to touch on is the revenues for P-card rebates or credit card rebates. So this was a number of years ago. Kathy suggested that we start, instead of cutting checks for absolutely everything, get on a credit card program and get some of the rewards from that. And we get about $25,000 a year in credit card rewards from all of the purchases, large equipment, whatever it may be. In the past, we've taken that and we've said, you know, it was kind of an incentive for departments to use their credit cards and then have it in an equipment replacement fund and then have it go towards offsetting some of the equipment for those departments specifically. We are feeling that that, it is a revenue that really is a general fund revenue. And by putting it in here, while it helps us, first of all, accomplish some of our goals that we're looking to meet this year. We felt like it was needed. It also is, we feel like it's probably more appropriate for it being something that city council gets to weigh in on year in and year out. Another big, so if we go down to the bottom, you'll see a transfer, these are our transfers in. And another big hit that we took, so we did have a benefit, obviously, a large benefit from the TID termination. One of the downfalls from terminating those TIDS is that we're able to charge those TIDS administrative fees for staff time and so on and so forth. So TIFF 6 or TID 6 had a fairly large, substantial administrative fees. I think maybe TID 3 may have two. So we're no longer able with those, with them not being open, we're no longer able to charge those. So that's a decrease in revenue of $43,000 from the TIDS to the general fund. However, you know, as TID 11 ramps up and TID 12 ramps up, we would expect to be able to adjust those to have that number increase over time. We just aren't able to do that now because we don't have increment in those TIDS to pay for it at this point. But over the years, we would, we can look at that. Those, that's a kind of a brief outline of where we stand with our revenues. Before I move on to the next thing, I guess I just want to ask, are there any questions associated with those? All right. Let's move on to, all right, let's go to, so we'll get to personnel in a little bit. And as everyone in here knows, that anywhere between 70 and 80% of our total operating budget is tied to our personnel. However, personnel is not the only thing that we have increases in. This year, we also have some fairly substantial increases in EMS. Primarily, let me get to my memo here. So EMS services went up about 22% or $15,389. This is tied to employee retention for some of theirs, but it's not all tied to that. Some of this is just because we grew in population as well. The, we are in a consortium with 13 different municipalities with Gold Cross. And that consortium and the equation is set by a per capita equation. And we grew by more than 200 people, which also increased ours. So that's a cost that this budget has to absorb. Fire department, it's not officially adopted yet, but right now we're looking at and we're expecting around an $8,000 increase. That's about a 7.2% increase for the fire department, largely tied to inflationary factors. Kind of end with personnel. So we'll continue. I'm just going to go along. I don't think we need to follow along on the Excel sheet. But expenditures tied to, well, actually, I'm changing my mind. Let's go to the summary for all the departments. So expenditures tied to services, materials, supplies. One thing that happens each year, this year, they got out a little earlier, I think it was like August. All of our department heads got to look at their budget worksheets and they submit a budget worksheet. They look at their trends. They submit expenses that they believe should be budgeted for 2023 for anything outside of personnel, associated costs. So for example, overtime for police department has been up lately and maybe over budget. And so that was one that I can think of that got adjusted appropriately. Salt, the cost of salt has skyrocketed for the public works department. The cost of fuel, it's, gas costs more. So those types of things that the department heads went through, they adjusted it, they submitted to the finance department. Then we went through them all. And I can tell you, going through them all, they were very, very logical increases. The department heads did a really nice job at submitting those. And this is kind of a summary of each department and what it went up. You can see the majority of the increases you see across the departments are tied to personnel. So that's all tied into this spreadsheet. If you look to the second, second, second furthest column to the right. If you see large increases, many of those are, most of it is tied to personnel compensation costs. We can dive into that a little bit too, if you would like to. I'm going to keep moving for now. A couple of other things, news that we received, we had a workshop on transit funding. We did expect transit funding or the 5311 program to return to normal funding levels, which would have been about 48% of the total service costs. We did receive news last week that it's definitely going to retreat, but it's only going to retreat to about 56%. So that's good. We're hoping that maybe we don't have to have that $10,000 and transferred into the transit fund. However, we are still budgeting for that. The airport fund was another substantial decrease in subsidization. We are budgeting for $23,000 less to be transferred from the general fund to the airport fund. And that is in large part, we were able to sit down, Stephanie and I, able to sit down with Matt and Brittany and look at current trends in fuel sales. And since they have arrived as the airport managers, we've seen very, very positive trends there. And we would expect those to continue throughout 2023. Another thing that we can look forward to, hopefully, you'll know, you remember in our capital improvement plan, we had a 10-unit hangar, most of which, the vast majority of which would be paid for through entitlement funds, not GO funding. And we hope to get that built as soon as possible. As soon as it does get built, we would anticipate an additional $24,000 of revenue to the airport fund, reducing the subsidization from the general fund to the airport fund and moving towards what I think we would all love to see, which is a kind of a self-sustaining airport fund. It wouldn't get us there, but it's, they would be steps in the right direction. And in the short time Matt and Brittany have been here, there's already been big steps in the right direction. The library and youth program funds. Those transfers are set to remain the same in this, so those would be flat in this budget. Let's see, utility rates, we've talked about those budgets would remain the same except for the revenues tied to the water, which we've already talked about going through the simplified rate increase. And that is, or I'm sorry, the simplified rate case. So we would be looking at a 4.5% as discussed during the October 4th city council meeting. Otherwise, those would remain the same. Sewer rates, we would look to keep the same and plan to keep the same for 2023. We look at our general fund balance, so per our 2021 audited numbers, our general fund balance is at 32.6%. And that exceeds our current policy. Our city policy says that our general fund balance should be between 15 and 25%. However, having that healthy fund balance was a reason, and it was noted, one of the reasons that we received an A-plus credit rating, which helps us borrow at lesser rates. The other thing is that 32.6%, when you look at non-restricted funds, we're at about 30%. So most of our fund balance is unrestricted funds. However, I just wanted to note that. We are not looking to, as I mentioned right at the beginning, we're not looking to draw from the fund balance in this. And that's, we are and we aren't. So we do have a couple of one-time draws. However, they will be, they're expected to be replaced or covered by one-time revenues. The one-time draw, that's the substantial one, is a Boomer appraisal going through the revaluation effort for about $60,000. We're basically at the point where we're forced to do that as we've fallen out of balance there. Where right now, our ratio for assessment is at about 78% last I saw. So we're looking to bring that to 100, which we'll get into in the forecasting and the impacts of that. Additionally, we do have, the police department has had some changes lately. Captain Helgeson's position, which, there's some sick leave payout and they've got a good plan to minimize the impact of that payout on the general fund. We do have a little bit budgeted for that in this one-time revenue as well. That one-time revenue is $80,000 and that's from a TID 6 disbursement. So TID 6 had some money in it at the time of the closure. When that happens, it gets dispersed to the taxing jurisdictions equally, proportionately. And our cut of that is expected to be about $80,000, which would cover these one-time draws. So all of that, oh, I'm going to hold on. I got to go back to personnel, most important thing. So I'm going to, I'll touch on personnel last and then we'll get to mill rate impacts. Personnel services, salaries, wages, benefits. This budget looks to have wage adjustments for all non-represented employees at 3%. That 3%, as I mentioned, for non-represented employees. The budget also does build in the potential for an additional 1% to law enforcement, not an additional over the 3%, but the law enforcement contract right now does go through 2023. And at the time it was signed, it had it 2023 as a 2% increase. This budget has it built into where everyone would give a 3%. However, that would only go into play if we restructured, potentially added a year on or extended the current union contract at terms that were agreeable to both sides. So the budget has it built in, but that would not go into an effect until those conversations happen. I can tell you that we have had conversations with the union reps and they are aware of this and they were pretty positive initially. I expect to hear back from them within a week or so. Health insurance, so, and to be honest, you know, we would, the 3%, we would love to do more. Of course. The health insurance was one that we kind of weren't necessarily expecting, although maybe we should have been. And this was a big cost increase at 8%. We have not had health insurance premium raises for four to five years, four for sure. So this year in 8%, it really probably is not bad if you look at the totality of it. However, it does hurt on any given budget year. So that 8% amounts to approximately $30,000 of increase. Currently, the city covers 90% of all premium costs and the employee covers 10%. Anytime there's substantial increases, you start having conversations about the structure of that and does it makes the most sense? And we felt like with inflation and all of that, it was important for us to try to build in and try to absorb as much of that as possible. So we're proposing keeping that current structure and having the city continue to cover 90% and the employee cover 10. What that means is that a family plan increases to the city cost $1,382 annually. A single plus one plan is $986 more expensive than it was a year ago for the city. And a single plan is $493 more expensive. For an idea, our total insurance package for a family plan, I apologize, department heads, I said the wrong number this morning. I looked again. It's, I said between 19 and 20,000. It's between 18, it's like 18 and a half. Thank you, Steph. So 18,600, whatever you just.
666.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you. So that's the total cost of a family plan, just for some perspective for the city. And that's at that 90%. So what does that mean for the employee? Based on their 10% contribution, the employee has to contribute more as well. For a family plan, now I'm going from annually to per month. The family plan, the employee would contribute an additional $12.79 per month. Single plus one would be $9.13 per month and the single plan at $4.56 per month. So that's the impact to the employee. WRS cost or Wisconsin retirement system, those have gone up as well. The ETF board approved a rate change and that is causing this. And it goes up 0.3% from 6.5 to 6.8. So that's both on the city and on the employee. All right, just looking through here. All right. So what impacts does that have on our mill rate, all of that? I think I've hit all of the high points. Do you have that, the Excel sheet that was emailed? Okay. So I want to stress that this, we've looked at this before when we were looking at debt service and the impacts of the mill rate. But we also said at that point, we did not know some of our numbers tied with operations. So we have this completely filled in, at least for this year and going into next year. What we don't have is we don't have a crystal ball and we can't tell what policy changes may happen at the state that may affect one year, two years, three years, four years out. This is strictly for planning purposes. But it does give an idea for the trends we expect to see should everything remain as it is right now. So you can see the mill rate with everything we just talked about and a balanced budget, we're looking at a mill rate drop of about 40 cents. Now, you might ask, well, why not just consider dropping it 20 cents instead of 40 cents if we have all these things that we feel like maybe we're not covering from a cost standpoint? Well, we can't because of levy limits. This is the max that we can levy for operations. So, so it's. So, so it's a good thing though. I mean, from a, from a mill rate standpoint, I think that's a positive. We can accomplish everything that this budget sets out to accomplish. And there's a little relief for the taxpayers in the city, which is, which is great. As you see, there's another big jump in the, in the following year. And that's pretty substantial. And that is an anticipated impact from the revaluation effort. So we talked about how our ratio right now is at 78% of total property value. And we're obviously through the revale effort that gets balanced to 100. So what we did is we took, took out manufacturing because manufacturing is all assessed by the state. And we, we just moved ours up percentage wise to 100%. And that's the impact it would be projected to have on our total assessed value, which you can see in the middle there. Those line items have been adjusted for that. And then it trickles through to the mill rate that you see at the bottom. And it's also important to note that though the mill rate goes down through that process, property values likely go up through that process, right? So it doesn't necessarily mean that taxes will drop by that much. Theoretically, it should be a wash, but depending on your property and the uniqueness of that property, you know, it may be a little bit one way or another, so. And then you can just see after that, probably not much use talking about the rest of the years. However, I will say that, you know, that debt service fund levy, which has a big impact on those mill rates, you know, that is our plan and we feel, I mean, that will be important to stick to that plan. So yes, we don't know what may happen from a policy change standpoint for the other line items. And, and it's hard to predict that, but that, I can say that debt service fund plan would probably remain pretty darn close to that. So just gives you an idea of potential trends. See, so I guess I'll just wrap it up and then open it up to any questions. As you guys can see, we've, there's a balanced budget in front of you for consideration. It, would we have loved to do more? Absolutely. Are we pretty encouraged by what we are able to do? Especially during this time, I would say, yeah. That being said, like I said, we were pretty lucky with the TID termination adjustment. Next year, we could have, we're going to be back to net new construction numbers. And unless something changes from a policy standpoint, and that may be anywhere from 1% to 2%. And maybe, you know, things continue to stay hot and it goes to 3%, who knows? Point is, is that we won't have that one time lift again if we do see similar CPI numbers. So municipal budgets truly are a year to year thing. And this year, we're happy to present this as an option. One thing I totally forgot to mention that I'm going to mention now, it also relates to personnel. Another thing this budget has is it does have a longevity proposal to it. The longevity proposal that we're, that we're asking council to consider and weigh in on. And again, we're not voting tonight and that's why we have a couple of meetings in between here. So you guys can, we're going to send out a budget booklet, you can look at all of this. You'll have a number of weeks to ask questions and, and give feedback. But that longevity proposal mimics the current union longevity scale with the exception of it adds a tier to it. So let me bring that up here actually. I'm gonna take this again, plug it in. Okay. Okay, so on your screen, you'll see this is language, it's very similar to what's in the police union contract right now. So after five years, there'd be a bump in 12 cents per hour. That would be their base wage, should be added to their base wage. At the 10 year mark, I believe that says 20 cents per hour, 15 years, 35 cents, 20 years, 50 cents. And then that last one is 25 years, that's the one that was added. That's not currently in the police union contract, that's 75 cents per hour. Talked at a previous budget meeting on how you, Henry, Henry, you weren't here for that, but I did mention you and I, when you were in this position, and I was in the park and rec director position, we had conversations on longevity. And at the time, I remember saying, I don't know what I think about longevity. I don't know if I like it. However, I, my mind has changed over time, especially with the impacts of the employee market and the hiring market and what it is and how that's compressed some of our longer term employees with some of our newer employees. So I definitely see a value in it, would love to have council weigh in on it and consider it. I think it is also important to note that because there is an added tier here from the union contract, this is another one of those things that it is budgeted for, for the union reps. But again, it wouldn't go into a place until that union contract was negotiated, extended hopefully, and so on and so forth. Last thing I'll say on this is that it's, it doesn't compound. So for example, year, let's see here, year 10, you don't get the full, you don't get another 20 cents, you get eight cents because you've already realized that 12 cents. And then it works that way throughout the schedule. So that's important to note too. The impact of this obviously is going to, the, the most expensive it's going to be is a one year shock kind of to the budget, and that's a bad word to use, but it's going to be the most expensive from year over year this year because we would implement the full scale to everyone that's been here. And that cost is approximately $13,000 to implement it in a one year time period. So I think, Mayor, did I miss anything? Stephanie, did I miss anything? I think that's about all.
As long as you're talking about paid, this still includes, and this is actually the third year of it, the incentive plan that we have for employees too.
Thank you. Yes, I also missed that. It does continue to budget for the employee incentive program, which is great. So that's another opportunity for employees to receive either a bonus, not to their base pay, but a bonus at the end of the year if they meet their goals and they're, and so on and so forth, or potentially a couple of days of floating holiday if they so value that over that bonus check. Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Am I understanding this, the longevity pay, you're, you're implementing it and it's, it's going to be retro or you're going to go back and say, okay, ex employee's been here so many years and then they'll get, that's how you're going to do it?
Yeah, yep. So if you've been here for 30 years and if this was adopted, you'd get the 75 cents bump on top of the 3%.
All right, because we do have one like that, I know for sure, park or public works, I'm sure.
We have a number of over 25 years.
25, yeah.
Which is awesome.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, great job.
And like I said, I know it's probably hard to ask questions now, but we'll send out that budget booklet by the end of the week. And if you have questions after that.
Will we get this, at least are they in our package or these sheets you just showed?
So the, the, yes. So I got, I sent you the budget memo, so you have that.
Right, I got that, but I didn't, these little.
The spreadsheets, we're going to send you in a PDF format because it's all workable stuff.
It's really easy to refer that way.
Yep, but that will be sent to you as a part of a budget booklet, yep.
Great.
Absolutely.
I think Henry has a question, so do I.
Go ahead, Henry.
Well, I, I guess I'd like to, it's really, I, I think it's good that we're not overreacting on this inflation issue. And I can only imagine how our personnel feel, right? They're going and they're feeling it every day. And, and I'm sure it's tough. But I'm glad that we're being presented with a very measured approach to wages. Because I for one would want to see some prudence here and not overreact on that measure and just kind of wait this out a year and see where we're at. Because we've all seen it, right? The peaks and valleys of, of the public sector. You know, if we, we get too expensive, now we're laying off people, we're potentially minimizing or reducing services. So I think that, that overarching goal of trying to keep services level while balancing the need to take care of our people and give them a, a good and fair compensation. I think this was a really nice balanced approach. I, for one, always struggle with the fund balance issue a little bit. And you never want to draw those down unless you want to do it for something one time. So again, to have that cushion maybe going into next year, because we just don't know. We may be faced with some really tough choices next year of employee reductions and that kind of stuff. So I think it's a very good balanced approach. And I, I think overall it's pretty, pretty good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Henry.
Thanks, Henry.
Paul Hagan, you had?
Yes, two questions. I don't know if I missed it, but did we qualify for expenditure in this next budget? And also what about a 3% increase in aldermatic and mayoral pay?
Yeah, I, so I'll, I'll answer that last one first. We haven't had, had a discussion over on the aldermatic or mayoral pay. It's not been a part of the conversations, not saying it can't be as we move forward towards a budget adoption. As far as the expenditure restraint, yes, we did qualify. And I'm glad you brought that up, Paul, because expenditure restraint went up quite a bit this year. It's actually at 9.2%. And you ask, well, why would expenditure restraint be at 9.2% when municipalities can only spend X amount more because of net new construction and shared revenues and all of that? An example is actually ARPA, right? So we have ARPA dollars that we used as revenue replacement for the home repair program. Well, that's still an expenditure, it would allow us to, to, to complete that program all in 2024 if we so, if council so choose to, chose to do that. And not have expenditure restraints problems, actually not even really be that close. So Paul, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Aaron, one question with the budget balance. Was it in your thinking in this process that, you know, pretty much leave it alone? It's higher than we, you know, our policy. Was the reasoning kind of behind that, well, like kind of what Henry said, that there's a big unknown out there that maybe, you know, not use it right now, but we're going to have trouble with inflation and it keeps, you know, going crazy. Was that in your mindset, I guess I, or wasn't it? I mean, it's a good idea.
Yeah. So I think one important thing to remember, you know, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about a development agreement in which we talked about an inter fund transfer that would be paid back, right? But that would impact like the percentage and where we are against our policy for a bit. So being prudent, knowing some of those things might, might happen. Also, I think it's important to note that some of the, that like is a perfect example. It's an opportunity in which that may generate, generate more net new construction, which could hire our operational levy, also building permit fees, so on and so forth. So hopefully that answers your question.
I just was wondering where you guys were all thinking with it, you know, because people, people see that big chunk and then it's like you said, why not use it? But now I'm thinking maybe it's, big unknown out there for, for the way inflation in the economy is.
So if we do expend that 400,000, which would get paid back to the general fund through the TIF in the future, but you would have to expend that 400,000 for that development agreement. That would reduce that fund balance down to about 18 to 20%, I think, if I remember right.
Yeah, I think actually, not correct, yeah, but I, I think I was about 24%, so still pretty good.
You can correct me if it's better.
I've learned that. I think it is around 24% is what that impact would be.
So we're still within the 15 to 25.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Paul Hagan, I didn't mean to stop you, you didn't ask any more questions, but we have the ability. So I think we still have the ability right now. So he was talking about a pay raise for city council members. Now understand that you don't get the pay raise till after you're reelected, of course. So the full pay raise would not take effect in 2023. But if we did do a full, let's say 3% pay increase, Stephanie, what would that look like? Did you turn it off? I'm sorry.
I just have a different computer plugged in.
Just to give you an idea how this program works for one thing and, and what that cost might be.
Talking about councils or are you talking about everyone?
Just council. Just council.
You had to give me a challenge that wasn't set up for that.
But that one isn't?
No.
What is the, what is the council budget right now? Yeah, just do it that way. Do it the old fashioned way. We're good at old fashioned.
Whoops.
It's true, that's not one.
Looks like it's about a $2,000 impact.
And that's total, right? I mean, next year it would not be, it would only be five council members.
Next year, because only half the council members will get it.
And not the, and not the mayor either would not get it either.
Right.
So it would just be the five council members. So it'd probably be eight, $900 in addition. Okay, thanks. Thank you, Steph. Anybody else have any thing you want to talk about or anything that you want to see in the budget?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Henry.
How much potentially is in the pool of funds for, I'm not sure what you termed the program, but a performance bonus or performance? You know, I, I know it is merit pay above and beyond any cost of living. Is it a pooled amount of money?
Yeah, I can answer that, Henry. Yep, it's at, it is a budget line item and it's at about 38,000.
For the whole organization?
That is correct.
Okay. Can you refresh how that process happens? You, you manage it, but then Okay. Can you refresh how that process happens? You, you manage it, but then, do you approve those at your level?
So, yeah, good question, Henry. So this was something that was, I think it's before you became a council member, we had a discussion, well, it definitely was, had discussions with staff, council, and we added it to the employee handbook, and the process is lined or laid out in that employee handbook. We're in the middle of our first process right now. We go through our evaluations, year-end evaluations, and during that time, we set our work plans, and then in addition to those work plans, we set SMART goals, or goals, or, you know, goals that are above and beyond what would be in maybe your typical work plan that you know you're going to do. We have check-ins midway through the year, the six-month mark, and we have progress reports, and the department heads have all had that, and they've documented the progress. And then at the end of the year, we see and say, has that goal been met, or has it not? So the way it works is that, so like, as a city administrator position, I review the, all the department heads, and then I also receive all of the, their direct reports. And then the middle-mannered department heads receive all their direct reports, and their direct reports, direct reports, if that makes sense. That's, that's how the process looks, and, and it is up to our supervisors. It's not me saying, yes, you qualified, or you didn't qualify, or you met your goal, you didn't. It, it leaves it to the, the direct supervisors to do that.
Okay. Thank you. And that program is in place and budgeted in the two thousand twenty-two budget?
That is, so there wasn't a line item for it. I think, when talking with Kathy, there was projections that would say that we were going to be adding to our general fund balance, and that, it was, that was kind of where it was budgeted. It was budgeted in general fund balance, which we projected to have a surplus in.
So the simple answer is yes. This is, two thousand twenty-three is actually the third year of it. Two thousand twenty-two is the first year where they have to do their SMART goals and so on. In two thousand twenty-one, we just paid a bonus to all of the employees around Christmas.
Yeah, good point. Right, good point.
Yeah, I think it's a, a, a really good program, and it gets you an opportunity to really recognize, you know, work over and above, so that all our employees have access to that opportunity. So hopefully, they take it in the way that I think it's meant to be, is to incentivize and also to reward really a great performance, which I, I believe all our employees have it in them and are capable of doing. So I, I think, again, it's a nice, a nice enhancer in this time when things are a little tighter for folks, gives them an opportunity. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Henry. I, I'm actually looking forward to early next year on how it did go, and I'm sure that will be part of Aaron's report, year-end report. We'll see that sometime next spring.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, Colin, go ahead.
Aaron and Stefan, part of your slides, since you had them up again, there was some section that talked a little bit about your, the funding that came from the state, I guess state aid, and then I think I saw in that highlighted area, how the police funding was diminishing. And I guess I was wondering your views on how, if this, you know, if there's support for that at the state level to increase that funding, how it would change our budget, if you could look at that line item. Maybe it's not something that's appropriate here, but it might demonstrate how important it is to, to ask and keep asking for state funding for those services that are so critical for, for our, our community.
Yeah. Good, good question. I think how it would affect our budget depends on what changes are made, right, and to what level. I get, the, the thing to note is that you're, you're kind of right on. The effort that the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, Towns Association, and Counties Association are taking is state aid specifically around the critical services, as they define them, which is PD, Public Works, EMS, those FIRE, those types of things. And they're looking to have conversations around those formulas to assist. I, I've been in a couple of meetings, Colin, and council members, that they've had those discussions. I can tell you that I don't get to just that we're very close. I haven't heard any details of any specific proposals that would suggest there's changes. So for me to say how that would impact it, I, I don't know at this point.
Okay.
It would help.
Any other questions? This is the fourth time Aaron has given this presentation, so he's, he's quickened it up quite a bit. You guys are going to take advantage of it. So if there's nothing else, we are, the plan is for you to sit on this for about a month, and we are going to discuss again, or we're looking, we're looking for approval at our, at our November fifteenth meeting, which is our second meeting in November. Hopefully, we'll be prepared to, to vote on it at that time. We can have discussion in between that time, obviously, but that's, that's the goal, quite honestly. Right? Anybody else? Who do you want to go home?
No children.
Motion by Hagan.
Second.
Second by Olson, that we adjourn. All in favor, certified by Seg. Aye.
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 Yes, say no. Motion carried. We're adjourned at eight, ten PM.